Hello. Welcome, and my name is Martin Navarrete. I'm with the Carlsbad Field Office. Thank you for participating in today's meeting. Your participation is very much appreciated. The purpose of the meeting is to provide a brief summary of the Class 2 Permit Modification Request. This is to update the Panel 8 Volatile Organic Compound Room-Based Limits, which will be talked about in more detail during our short presentation. Permites, the Department of Energy and the Nuclear Waste Partnership, are planning to submit this permit modification later this month. Dr. Josh Vida from the Regulatory Environmental Services will provide a short presentation. The presenters this evening are to my right will be Mr. Bob Kerman and Mr. Ray Carrasco. They're here to help us address questions directly applicable to the permit modification. We will address questions pertaining to this permit modification after the presentation is complete. We will not address any questions that are outside the scope of this permit modification. Questions will be accepted via the chat function Zoom. We will not post a presentation or the draft PermitMod request since this is still under review and may change prior to submittal to the New Mexico Environmental Department. With that, I will turn it over to Dr. Josh Vida.
Good evening. My name is Joshua Vida, and I work for Regulatory Environmental Services, a division of the Amentum Technical Services Organization. This division operates the Regulatory Compliance Program at the WIP facility under an affiliate agreement with Nuclear Waste Partnership, who is the co-permitee. As Mr. Navarrete indicated, I'm also joined today by Bob Kerman and Ray Carrasco. The purpose of this meeting is to first briefly summarize the permit modification request titled "Update Panel 8 Volatile Organic Compound Room-Based Limits", which is planned for submittal to the New Mexico Environment Department Hazardous Waste Bureau later this month. After our brief summary, we are here to answer any questions that you may have pertaining to the planned submittal of this permit modification request. We will now begin our briefing, which is supported by the following slide presentation. The permittees are proposing to submit to the NMED Hazardous Waste Bureau Volatile Organic Compound Room-Based Limits. Next slide. This permit modification request proposes to revise permit text, tables, and figures to update the volatile organic compound room-based limits for Panel 8 due to a change in room height. Prior to 2014, Panel 8 Rooms 1 and 2 were fully mined, and mining in Room 3 was ongoing. In February 2014, mining was suspended. When mining operations resumed four years later, a decision was made to re-mine the existing back in Rooms 1, 2, and 3 and to also change the back for the remainder of Panel 8, which ensures long-term stability and safety of the panel in the future. This decision resulted in drifts and rooms that have a larger height dimension than Panels 1 through 7. At the time of waste emplacement, Panel 8 will have a nominal room height of 16 feet versus 13 feet. The width and length of the rooms in Panel 8 remain unchanged. Because health-based volatile organic compound room-based limits are volume-dependent, an update to these limits is needed to maintain an equivalent level of worker protection in Panel 8 as was required for Panels 1 through 7. The health-based limits for volatile organic compounds are derived from analyte data listed in the National Institute of Occupational Safety and Health (NIOSH) Guide to Chemical Hazards. The 1997 RIC Report B Application Appendix D9 Attachment 1 Methodology was used to calculate the new room-based limits for Panel 8. The permit modification request only affects the disposal room volatile organic compound monitoring program. The repository volatile organic compound monitoring program, or surface monitoring, remains unchanged. Next slide. The permittees have implemented the confirmatory volatile organic compound program at the WIP facility. The purpose of this program is to confirm that the concentration of volatile organic compounds entrained in the air emissions from the WIP underground hazardous waste disposal units do not exceed the environmental performance standard pursuant to 40 CFR 264.601 Charlie. Specifically, the measured concentration of volatile organic compounds in any open, active room and in each closed room and active panels shall not exceed the limits specified in Permit Part 4.4 Table 4.4.1. These values are shown on this slide. The current volatile organic compound room-based limits specified in Permit Part 4.4 Table 4.4.1 are shown in the middle column under the header Panels 1 through 7. As previously stated, the volatile organic compound room-based limits for Panel 8 require an update due to a change in the room height dimension. At the time of waste emplacement, Panel 8 will have a nominal room height of 16 feet versus 13 feet. The far-right column shown on this slide indicates the proposed updated Panel 8 Volatile Organic Compound Room-Based Limits after applying the room height adjustment. You may have noticed that nine of the 10 analyte values presented for the proposed volatile organic compound room-based limits in Panel 8 have decreased. One analyte, chlorobenzene, remains unchanged. In addition to presenting itself as a health-based hazard, chlorobenzene also presents as a flammability hazard, which must be considered. The permit volatile organic compound room-based limit for this analyte, which is 13,000 parts per million by volume, is currently based on the flammability constraint in the closed adjacent room. Therefore, the health-based protective limit, after adjusting for the room height change in Panel 8, must be compared to the existing flammability limit. The value in the permit will reflect the most restrictive condition between the health-based hazard and the flammability hazard. When comparing the adjusted health-based limit of chlorobenzene to the flammability limit, the flammability limit remains the most restrictive. Because the lower flammability limit, or lower explosive limit, listed in the NIOSH Pocket Guide to Chemical Hazards is normalized by volume, its value remains unchanged by the new room dimension. The other nine proposed analyte values are driven by the health-based hazard in the active room, which is based on the NIOSH Immediately Dangerous to Life or Death Ideal Age Constraint. Next slide. The regulations address classification of permit modifications in 40 CFR 270.42 Appendix 1. Pursuant to these regulations, an update to Panel 8 Volatile Organic Compound Room-Based Limits is identified as a Class 2 Permit Modification Request under Item Alpha 4 Bravo. General Permit Provisions: Changes in Frequency of or Procedures for Monitoring, Reporting, Sampling, or Maintenance Activities by the Permittees. Other Changes. Next slide. This modification proposes to add permit conditions that provide an equivalent level of worker protection in Panel 8 for volatile organic compounds as was required for Panels 1 through 7. This modification documents the nominal room dimensions for Panel 8 and provides the NMED Hazardous Waste Bureau with information to evaluate the protectiveness of the proposed Panel 8 Volatile Organic Compound Room-Based Limits. This modification also ensures other portions of the permit reflect these updates. Next slide. This modification provides the necessary information required by 40 CFR 270.42 Charlie 1 Subpart 4, including the applicable information required by 40 CFR 270.13 through 270.23, 270.62, 270.63, and 270.66. Next slide. In summary, this permit modification request proposes to update the permit descriptive text, applicable figures, and applicable tables associated with the volatile organic compound room-based limits for Panel 8. No changes are required to the conditions in the permit affecting the repository VSC monitoring program. This permit modification request does not reduce the ability of the permittees to provide continued protection of human health and the environment. Next slide. Once again, the permittees plan to submit the Class 2 Permit Modification Request to the NMED Hazardous Waste Bureau later this month. After submittal, there will be a public meeting followed by a public comment period pursuant to the regulations for interested parties to comment on the proposed modification. Next slide. This concludes our brief summary. We will now open the meeting up for questions, and as a reminder, please remember to use the chat feature to ask a question.
Okay, hello, we're back. We've got the first question. The first question is, is a proposed height of the Room 8 identical to the height of the proposed Rooms 11 and 12?
The answer to that question is no. Proposed Rooms 11 and 12 have a height of 14 feet.
Okay, next question. Why are VOCs being released at all? Aren't these closed containers?
The containers are closed. However, every container is required to have a filter vent installed on the container, and hence the VOCs are allowed to be released.
Okay, we'll move on. Next question. Will the next modification be to stack the drums 4 high?
The current permit allows drums to be stacked 3 high, and drums will not be stacked 4 high.
Okay, we're back. These questions are coming a little slow, so we had some time to look at them. Next question here is, since you have known about the height of Panel 8 for several years, why is a PMR just now being proposed?
It's strictly a matter of timing. We now have to, now that the panel is completed, it's going to be outfitted, and it will have to be certified. And part of the certification process will be to assure that operating the panel will comply with the permit. Hence, we need to modify these room-based limits to make sure that operating at the panel is protective.
Thank you. Okay, next question, please. What are the impacts to operations, worker safety, and the environment if the proposed PMR is not approved?
The PMR is necessary to make the operations protective to human health and the environment. So if the PMR is not approved, then the increased level of protection or the needed level of protection won't be added to the permit.
Okay, we're back. I believe, I don't see any more questions coming in. There were a few questions that had come in that were not relevant to this PermitMod request, so those will not be answered at this time. Still waiting on if there's any more questions. Please feel free. Okay, we're back. Okay, we've got, next question here. It is, does this PMR affect the planned start date for operations Panel 8 of May 2022?
Yes, it does. That's why it's being submitted at this time, so that, as I stated before, as part of the certification process for starting waste emplacement in that panel, the professional engineer will have to review if all the permit requirements are being met. One of those requirements will be adequate protection levels via room-based VOC monitoring.
Okay, thank you. Our next question. Are the methods and calculations used as the basis for the purpose of VOC limits available for public review?
Yes, as I had stated in the discussion, the RICRA Part B Application Appendix Delta 9 Attachment 1 Methodology was used to calculate the VOC room-based limits. In this PMR, there is an attachment Charlie that describes that methodology along with the calculations, the step-by-step calculations on how these new values were calculated.
Thank you, Joshua. Okay, hello, we're back. Okay, going to the next question. Regarding timing, if the PMR is considered as a Class 3 because of significant public interest, will certification of Panel 8 be done under the existing permit requirements?
Per the regulations, this topic is classified as a Class 2, as stated in the presentation, and is clearly delineated in the Permit Modification Request.
Thank you. Okay, next question. Are there also changes to the VOC limits in adjacent rooms?
The limits that were shown on the slide and that will be included in a table in the Permit Modification Request address and are addressed to the adjacent room.
Thank you. Short pause again till the questions keep coming in. Thank you. Short pause again till the questions keep coming in. Thank you. Okay, hello, we're back. Okay, I've got a couple more questions here. First one, the permit renewal application states that there would be no change in room-based limits in Panel 8. Why was the inaccuracy included?
At the time the renewal application was prepared, the decisions about Panel 8 had not been completely made. And so at the time, the expectation was the limits would remain the same. And in reality, health-based limits are remaining the same by changing the VOC values for Room 8. We're ensuring that that the level of protectiveness remains the same in all the panels.
Thank you. Next question. What is the current mine height of Room 8?
The current mine height, I believe, is of Panel 8 is currently nominal 16 feet.
Thank you, Josh. Okay. Close. Let's go for a short pause. I don't see anything right now, and we'll be right back. Thank you. Okay, we are back. Got one, one question here. When did the mining of Panel 8 begin? Bob, can you take that one?
I'll take that one.
Ray?
Mining of Panel, Panel 8 began in 2013 in December 2013, which is right a couple of months before the events happened.
Thank you, Ray. Next question here. How did the height of Panel 8 become 16 feet when the current permitted height is only 13 feet? Ray, you want to take that?
The, the reason that we're at 16 foot right now is because when we started mining Panel 8, we mined the initial, the initial excavations were to the, to the back where we were going to keep the rooms at. So that kind of starts the, the location of, of the top of the room. In Room 1, in, in Room 1, basically, in order to stay away from any adverse clay seams that would cause us floor problems, we, we kept the back at, right above the clay seams to, to get rid of that, that problem from a ground control standpoint. And then the, the actual floor itself is cut right below the orange marker bed, which also gives us a more stable floor. So that's how the 16 foot came out. It's just the way the stratigraphy is at in Panel 8.
Thank you, Ray. Okay, let's see, I've got another question here. After December 2013, when did mining of Panel 8 resume?
Mining was suspended in February 2014, and then four years since 2014, mining commenced. Mining commenced, recommenced in Panel 8, or resumed in 2018.
Thank you, Joshua. Appreciate that. If we could pause this for a minute while there are other questions come in. Thank you so much. Okay, thanks for everybody's patience. So we're back. Next question here. What documentation is made publicly available if the VOC limits are exceeded?
Permit Part 4 contains a series of requirements, the notification requirements that if, that require that the agent's NMD be notified if the limits are approached and not if they're exceeded. So as, and so as the limits are approached, the permitees have to, have to notify NMD of what, what limits are involved, where they are. There's also some additional requirements for increasing monitoring sampling frequency. But that letter of notification is, there's a requirement to post that to the WIP homepage, to the stakeholder page, so that anybody that's interested can see that notification.
Thank you, Mr. Kerman. Okay, I've got another question. Will this specifically information be available in the Class 2 permit mod request?
Yes, that information is included and will be included in the permit modification request.
Thank you. Next question. How long does it normally take to mine a panel? Ray, you want to take that one?
Normally to mine a panel, it'll take about three to four, four years, depending on the rate of mining.
Thank you, Ray. Next question here. Sampling of air in both open and closed rooms of most previous panels, which would be 1 through 6, for both H2 and CH4 was routine. Will sampling of the seven rooms in Panel 8 be constructed and reported?
The answer to that question is yes. The sampling that is described in Attachment N in the permit is similar and is not affected by this modification.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Anymore? One more here. Will sampling a room which is both closed and open be done for VOCs? And how does DOE ensure the VOC samples are representative of the worker exposure?
The current permit contains the Ball Organic Compound Monitoring Program and specifically describes the disposal room Ball Organic Compound Monitoring Program in Attachment N as of November. And this describes the sampling, the reporting, and the activities to monitor and to look at room-based limits for both the active room and the closed adjacent room to ensure worker protection.
Thank you, Josh. Next question. Hello, we're back. I've got one question. What is the definition of limits being approached? 90% of limit?
There are actually two limits relative to room-based monitoring. There's a 50% limit. So when that 50% limit is reached, there has to be a notification plus the frequencies, the sampling frequency will increase. And then there's a 95% limit. If the 95% limit is approached, then the permitee has to discuss with the agency how to mitigate that or, or alternatively, close that, close that room and move on to the next room.
Thank you, Bob. Don't have any questions coming out just yet, so we'll take a short pause and we will be right back. Thank you. Okay, thank you. We're back. I believe that concludes our presentation, meeting for this evening. The, some of the questions were not relevant to this PMR, so they will not be addressed. I think that wraps it up, and I appreciate everybody's patience. Thank you so much.
Recording.